Good afternoon and welcome to our one o'clock work session for the Cleveland City Council. It's just a few minutes past one o'clock and we will begin our Monday, March the 10th work session agenda. I don't have any special presentations or public comments, Mr. Fivus. Do we have anyone request? All right. Is there anyone seeking to address the council prior to the beginning of our meeting during this public comments? Please raise your hand. And I don't see anybody requesting, so we will go expeditiously to item two, which is our city manager report. Welcome back, Mr. Fivus.
Hopefully, this is a painless session. Thank you so much for your time today. First item is a good item that we've confirmed with the Johnston family that they can be present at the May 12th, 2025 grand opening of Johnston Park at 11:30. Family members will be there and they are excited about that. So I think that that's a positive thing and hopefully by that time, all the flowers and everything would have been blooming and Johnston Park will be different than the winter wonderland and it'll be transformed into a spring wonderland. So in front of you, you have a passed out a request for proposal draft, and this is a draft, for the food and beverage vendor and tenant space in the future city hall. We have some parameters that have been set. Brian Turner put this document together. We're not going to go into the details. I'm passing that out for your, to review that, but we'll probably come back at the next meeting and give a presentation and we'll talk about how to move forward in that. And, you know, we don't know what the timeline is to have a food and beverage space. When they open next spring, we have to start that process to attract someone and to have someone that can come in there. So take that and at our next meeting, we'll talk about it a little bit more. There's a lot going on, have a number of projects. Obviously, Tinsley Park is going along very well and, you know, we're doing some work down on some utility work for the Cherokee right now on Church Street. So they had some closings during the day and hopefully we'll get that. But if you haven't seen the front of the, of the, I guess it's the old Firestone building, is that a lot of the paint has been taken off that and it looks pretty good. They still have a little bit of work to do. I would encourage you to look at that. It certainly gives it a cleaner look than what it had been painted, so we're excited about that as well. We are, we're spending most of our time working on the budget and our budget process. The budgets have been submitted. Department heads have submitted all their finals. We have about a gap of somewhere between five to 10 million dollars that the budget is over, so we have more needs than we have having in revenue at the moment. So we're looking in our next phase to reduce that and just reduce overall spending in general. So, and of course, we'll bring you our budget proposal. You'll have a copy of that. We won't have the first reading until the first meeting in June, so you still have some, some time to, before we have to go through that, but you'll probably have a copy of that for your review in middle to late May. And if you certainly have any requests or budget requests, let us know. We are trying to get scheduled and we'll talk about it between the meetings a little bit, about setting up a budget workshop in which we'll talk, getting to gory details, some of the school funding, some of the other issues that we have outstanding. So we'll set some time aside and really get into a lot of that and go from there.
Hey, Joe, what's the square footage on the restaurant? Sorry, I'm going back, but, and what's the rent? I can't find anything about that.
Those are all the questions that, that we're looking for is.
We don't know what square footage is.
It says sixteen hundred.
Yeah, it says in the, the first paragraph, sixteen hundred square feet.
We don't know what the rent is?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out is, is do we establish the rent upfront? Or do we, because we have to put this out for bid, or do we let people competitively bid for those lease costs? And those are, those are the things that we want to make sure that, that we have a good conversation with the elected body before you guys get these bids back and have to figure out who you're going to select and we want you to be able to go through that. And if there's tweaks or approaches that we don't know about, some of you have some good experience as far as retail and commercial stuff and certainly your, your opinions are wanted and that's why we want to get you the information so you can evaluate.
I'm seeing this where they don't, you're not allowed to fry, so that's going to cut your menu in half.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming we don't want to pay for a hood, but I mean, it's very expensive. But we want them to be capable of catering and have water, warm, cold, and heat. I don't know, it's kind of.
So there's, there's some complex questions and I think this is one of those group projects that we all need to get on the same page and make sure that we get what, what, what we want for the process. So, so at the next meeting, we'll probably give a presentation. You can, you can evaluate it and you can have your questions and you can give us feedback and then we can figure out our timeline to get it going.
Thank you.
This last week, we had a wonderful session for our compensation study. We had, every employee had the opportunity to go to an orientation and a focus group. This week, they are filling out individual job-related analysis. We're very happy with the company that, that you guys have hired and I think they're, they're communicating very well and, and we'll keep you updated going through the process. Right now, we're just in the process of collecting information from employees and then they'll, they'll get to the, to the meat of it probably later in March. And that's really all I had. Are there any specific projects or anything we can update you on or any other questions that you may have?
Questions from the council, from Mr. Fivus?
Yeah, what's the timeline with Tinsley?
When we get done with the peerless project, Public Works will go there. We hope that the pickleball courts, in fact, we had a really good meeting with the pickleball association on Friday. The pickleball courts should be, for all intensive purposes, done in later spring. We have a good, we still have to put a pavilion in the front there if you haven't seen that. And those are the two things. And then we'll just be working on redoing the parking lot in the upcoming months, so.
Softball fields.
Softball fields will be completely rehabbed.
When do you expect those?
What's that?
When do you expect those?
Well, we're probably not going to make the spring season, so we have our fall season, which usually starts in September.
Okay.
And we hope to be able to hit that, that fall season for those ball fields. We're getting cost quotes and trying to figure out if, if we want to include any turf applications out there. And, and, you know, there's, there's some, there's some you can go and have it ready that you can have people use at your AAU travel teams and your, you know, as a softball and they're doing some evaluation on what that. Now, of course, turf would, would increase costs, but it also increases the usage and all of that, so there's some of that analysis going on.
Okay.
You have any more to add to that, Jonathan?
No, the only thing that would slow the softball down is the, we have to get the pavilion and, the entrance pavilion and get it constructed, so.
But we'll redo the parking lot before.
Yes, we'll redo the softball field.
Yeah, everything will be redone all the way out to Key Street.
Once all, all the concrete trucks and dump trucks can get off of it, then it's safe to pave. Before then, they'll just tear it right back up, so we have to just make sure all the concrete trucks are done.
I got you.
Councilman Cassidy, you got a question?
Yeah, Joe, just a couple of questions while we're on the subject of Cherokee walk through. Do you have a date or something we can get into Cherokee and walk through the process? I know it's, the weather's been handling a little bit.
Yeah, you know, you've, you've had still thirty-degree mornings. It's, it's pretty much whenever, I, I will tell you that, that there's not too much more exciting in there, but anytime anyone wants a private tour, we're able to do that. Brian is not here today, but, but if you wanted to schedule a joint thing at the next meeting or the first meeting in April where the temperatures are, are a little bit better, we're happy to take everyone through and show that. And especially since they've been doing, the, the Firestone building is, is much more advanced. They're still doing a lot of demo, wouldn't you say, Jonathan? So you, you, you basically see the demo, they haven't really done any finishes or anything like that.
The narrow stairs, the only way to get up to the upper floors right now, so you may want to.
A ladder?
Yeah, you may want to.
Well, we might have to get a bucket truck.
Third truck.
No, I don't want anything on that.
Uh, I don't know, I can answer.
I would, I would like to know when they get, get it, some type of stairway going up and some of the offices, you know, framed up upstairs.
Yeah, they're not, they're not.
I know, but when it gets to that point, if we could do a tour at that point.
Oh, yeah.
Are we still on timeframe for August 2025, what we're talking about?
The, yeah, that, that timeframe was for the Firestone building.
Right, right.
And that, that one's much more advanced. By contract, the other one is March 26th is when we should be able to move in.
I thought it was going to be in by Christmas.
It might be, but the contract says March.
So we do it August in that Firestone, we go over the whole council meetings at that time we open it up. The courtyard will be done, everything will be done.
Yeah, we, we would, I'm not sure on all aspects of the courtyard, but the building should be much, should be pretty advanced at that time.
Jim Sharp Park, can you give me an update where we, status we stand on the end at this point, Jonathan? Because he's looking at you.
The equipment here, that grading is not, they've still got a few things left. Getting it ready to prep, you've got to pour all that base for the master turf or whatever they call that synthetic turf.
Yeah.
So it's moving along, that part is, the pavilion's getting ready to go up out of the ground at some point in the future.
I know the weather, but I haven't seen any, any progress done in the last couple of weeks over there. Nobody's been moving over there that I've seen the last three or four weeks.
They're, I think they were waiting on the site to dry out just a little bit more before they can start doing the job.
Joe, what about the J turn on 25th Street?
Yeah, the.
Where are we at with that?
Yeah, let me go back to Sharp Park for a moment. Is that probably at the next meeting, we'll have a change order for the council to consider on that. And that will allow that contractor to build the connection underneath Candy's Lane, underneath the river and connect it in with the greenway. So I, I think it's seventy thousand dollars or something. So, so you should expect that and that would be the next thing. And so, so that will obviously be a, an incredibly important amenity so that you could park at the, the parking lot and go to, and go to the restrooms and, and go up there, so.
In excess, people have crossed the road either they can access to the neighborhood interlaced circle they can walk under and get to.
That's right.
I appreciate that, okay. The J turn on 25th Street?
Um, you know, David gave me a date. Is he here? He strategically did not show up. It is on a schedule. Robert, you know, you were at that meeting with T-Dot.
It's fiscal year 27.
Twenty seven?
Twenty six, I'm sorry, but we're going to have a public meeting. T-Dot's having a public meeting on it in April.
Yeah.
They have a lock in those dates.
Yeah, and fiscal year, just, just fiscal year 26 is from, anytime from July 25. Well, it's, it's the federal.
Yes.
So.
October.
So October 25.
September.
So sometime in either, it will probably be next spring when they would begin that, be my guess.
I guess everything on Highway 60 is really going really well. They're starting to work out there quite a bit now, so I've, I've got a feeling they're going to beat that time date, Dr. Elliott. So your schools, for the fall next year, we should have everything done, so we'll have access to that and that's going to be a great thing. Last thing, Joe, real quick, is urban growth boundary.
Mm-hmm.
I know I went into being last week, but I just want to know, I know I was at the meeting when they took a vote and stuff. Can you update us on that for council members that may not be aware of?
Yeah, yeah, they had the, the first public hearing last Thursday and, and the comments, I don't think there were any real comments. There was one minor suggestion that, that, that Robert's looking at for them, it doesn't, won't matter in the big picture. But the other meeting is Thursday, this Thursday at 6:00 PM, I believe. Robert?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? And, and then at that, after the public hearing, then they'll have, potentially have a, a vote and, and we'll forward that on to the city council for the city council's consideration on March 24th. Then the county will vote on it at their next meeting in April and then Charleston actually does it the next day and then we'll be all done. If everything goes the way it should.
In that meeting, Mayor Maude addressed you on that part because y'all had some perimeters, y'all drew out on the map and stuff. I didn't go up there with everybody else, but I think they took a vote and kind of come to some type of consideration that, that was agreeable on both parties. Am I right or wrong on that?
You are correct, Councilman. There was, I've referred to it as map 5.0 and it was, I think it the fifth version of it that GIS and Robert had drawn and, and there were minor alterations requested to the southwest corner, sort of the landfill area, and we accepted that as a minor alteration. City of Charleston was present, they were happy. The members of the county commission that were present seemed to be okay with the changes as submitted and of course, the city was in agreement, so.
There's been some give and take from all parties involved and hopefully we have something now that everyone will agree on.
A clean map this time that y'all will vote on this time. Everybody voted to go forward with, with the changes were, but we get the clean map.
We hope to see map 6.0 at Thursday's meeting.
Robert, you got that ready, 6.0?
Get it on tomorrow.
That's all I have, Joe. Thank you for entertaining my question.
Thanks, Councilman Cassidy. Any other questions from the council, from Mr. Fivus, before we begin the review of our exciting three o'clock agenda? All right, Mr. Fivus?
I do have one more addition onto the thing is that there was actually a very lengthy meeting with T-Dot on the 25th Street and Akoi intersection project. They are at the point that they are measuring inches and feet on curbs and different turn angles and radiuses. It's, it's pretty technical stuff and that is all a good, that is, that is a really good sign that they're getting that close on, on the design. Our team that, that went in and attended that, and there were probably thirty people We, we've made a couple of suggestions. They've, they've constricted a couple areas, like the turn lane off of north Akoi going towards downtown, is that we would prefer to have another turn lane in there. And, and so we are, we've advocated in, in, in putting that and working with them on that. I mean, I think they're, they're certainly open to a lot of complexities. You know, I think they've said that the project has cost more than what they thought it would and, you know, that's, that's not a surprise to any of us. But, but the good news is that, that they're, they're on, they're on go and they have the funding and they're, they, everything seems like very positive to get that project done. Now, that project, the problem with that project is the construction time. It will be a very painful construction process through there. It will have to be very difficult on dealing with how much traffic goes through there on a daily basis, but, but that would, that would, has to be done regardless at some point, so. Mr. Mayor, I was going to go to the agenda, if that's all right? Oh, the first thing on the agenda is I emailed everyone and that there is something from T-Dot, which is a, a resolution, and I think they have it in front of them. Basically, you guys approved, or the city council approved, a resolution to give a temporary easement to the Georgetown project for T-Dot to do, for their contractor to the project, and it was an acre. They have come back and they want to amend that and they've reduced the amount of temporary easement from an acre down to point one four. So with, so it's, it's pretty straightforward and, and we want this added to the agenda if, if the council so pleases and we can get that back to them and do that.
Is that going to be on the consent or the new business?
Let's put it on new business.
It doesn't change or delay anything they're doing, correct?
Has, has no change or function, because what, their, their temporary lease ran out of time.
Georgetown ran?
Yeah.
Yeah, their temporary lease ran out of time, so they need to, needed to extend what they originally had, but then they realized they didn't need as much as they were asking for and they were going to pay us a few thousand dollars, so they, they save, by reducing it from an acre to a point four, they, they saved a few nickels on, on their temporary lease process, so.
So we'll add that to item G on new business.
Yes.
To the three o'clock.
First item on the agenda we have is item 6A. It's to hear public comments concerning requests by Charles Pitner for ordinance to zone point one six on Fair Street from CG to R2. Again, this is a, we've seen a lot of development in this area and this is just cleaning up lots and adding to make sure the zonings are, are correct. Item 6B is public hearing to public comments concerning requests by Real Life Village Incorporated for consideration of an ordinance to amend PUD 47 to remove the 50-foot right-of-way dedication requirement. This is the project behind Westmore Church of God. I believe that Mitch Maloney is, is the person that's spearheading it. Is originally, there was a, a right-of-way that, that extended through there and there's a creek and it hooked up at some point with Free Will Road. That, that project is probably pretty cost prohibitive and may bring a lot of traffic through Westmore's campus. So what they're requesting is just to eliminate that, that right-of-way through there. I believe, I think we recommended yes, Robert?
Yes.
And, but we also added that they give us access for a greenway.
Just they were comfortable.
So that we have, so you have the greenway that goes behind Westmore, but this would open up that we could have a leg of the greenway or sidewalk essentially connect from, from down under the bridge all the way up through that campus and connect into, eventually connect into Candy's Lane, so you can create another loop that goes through there. That connection will fit in, you know, we need about a quarter mile from that bridge back to Fletcher Park. Once we do that, we would have probably combined five mile, five miles of trail back through all that campus.
Joe, a question on that. Will they connect that road, have a separate access? They, they spoke to us about that before, or their intent is to connect that campus to the road, will they have a separate exit going out? I forget, the road goes by the skating rink. What's, what's the road?
Fletcher Road. Fletcher Road.
Fletcher Road. Will they connect that with?
No, I think they're going to use, I think that's the problem is I think they want to use their current road. What they don't want to do is have a bunch of free wheel traffic throwing through there, so this is what that eliminates.
Okay. I'm talking about from campus to, to that, it's about 200 yards or so, right there on the interstate. They want to have a separate exit going out the campus, Westmore. Remember, we talked about that?
Want to answer that, Robert?
I think they built that when they did their parking lot. They just put it, you have to flow through their parking lot, but that accomplished.
But they will tie it into Fletcher then, correct?
Instead of tying it into, they tied the parking lot into the legacy Yen Fletcher and so we crossed it through.
Okay, all right. I just want to clarify.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think this Real Life Village will exit and enter from, and the, the name of the road is.
Legacy.
Legacy, that they will, that will be the main road, but there is an access point that you can get out if you go through their parking lot to Fletcher to, to get more access points in there.
Yeah.
Joe, are we making any success in getting the property for that last leg of the greenway to Fletcher Park?
Maybe.
Maybe.
I'll tell you a little bit later what, what we've done on that. We think the property is for sale.
Certainly, we don't want to miss any opportunity.
No. I'm moving on to item 6C, unless there's any questions. Have a public hearing to comments concerning requests by multiple property owners to rezone 3.73 acres located at Valleyhead Road for R1 to PUD 63. Is there anything we need to explain? This is a little complex. You want to come up and explain that one? I, that there's, there's, we've had some questions on this, because it's, it's right around this Publix area and it might be one that you probably have questions there, but we might as well talk about it. Yeah, this is a request that, that looks to do.
Yeah, this is a request that looks to do townhome, multifamily type development, not kind of too dense. I do think there was an individual who may have been masquerading as one of the property owners, making some phone calls, but we have verified all properties involved and the applications that we have are part of the process, so everything's good. But I do think there was some confusion with some phone calls from someone in the public. They did not reach out to me. But overall, getting the PUD, you know, that property's going to redevelop one way or the other, and I think this does a really good job of addressing the existing infrastructure that we have there, giving us the ability to improve in the future. Plus, we get some sidewalk construction and things like that through there, so that's good.
What's the PUD allow?
The PUD allows for townhome development or multifamily in that style, kind of a up to, I believe it's 50 units max, so it's... It kind of falls in line with the density that we've seen through that area consistently. If there's any kind of strangeness about it, it's actually quite clean, but there was someone, I think, reaching out. So, they never reached out to me and I don't know what that was about, but we've verified from staff that we're comfortable with what we're rezoning and what the applications we have are referenced as the properties in question.
Well, you have a piece of property that says, has four different owners.
Yeah.
Does it require all four agreeing to request rezoning before we even look at it?
Well, and so, there's different parcels that are owned by different people, but yes, like the, you know, or in some cases, there's some legal document that actually show which one of the owners is speaking for the family or things like that. We asked for the backup documents, yes.
But if it were a single parcel and it had four owners? All four would have to agree to request the rezoning?
That's right, they're all equal owners, yes.
Thank you.
Don't go too far.
Okay. Any of a public hearing to hear public comments on requests by Dennis Botts for consideration of an ordinance to abandon the section of unopened right-of-way for location along Johnson Boulevard ending at the city limits. We've been, for the, it's like four or five meetings in a row that we've had. Can you tell us a little bit what Dennis is doing out there?
There's a couple of existing lots right there. He's gonna build a couple of single-family homes and some townhomes on this property. This 10-foot easement of some kind, right-of-way is, extends another probably 30 feet or so into the county. That property owner who's in the county has no concerns about it disappearing. They're gonna abandon it on their end. But it's a... There's an existing house and then there's some vacant land and so, what's happening is the alley will be abandoned and through that, we have a re-subdivision of lots to allow for single-family.
And this is like the fourth one that we've done on that?
Yeah, yeah, it's been a process because it was kind of a mess and it included an annexation. It includes the right-of-way abandonment, plus there's like four or five lots that have changed shape. So, it's taken some time and I'll be pleased to get it behind us because it's a very small area, but it's been confusing, so.
Is that something he'll maintain?
I believe he'll be selling those.
He'll let his maintained city want to maintain it?
The alley goes away, so then it becomes private property. That's their responsibility and what will be left there will be owned, you know, sold houses. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have consent to item 7A. This is giving the mayor authorization to sign a letter to consider holdover licensee with T.DOT until a license agreement to construct and maintain sidewalks can be renewed. Basically, on, we have a number of licenses, like one for the Welcome to Cleveland sign. Anytime we put something in their right-of-way, they ask us for a license and those just need to be reviewed periodically and this is one of them for, I think we have some stormwater facilities and sometimes in some of the right-aways and so, this is just a license of just paperwork and making sure that they're good and we're good. 7B is authorizing a mayor to sign a request for consent for the assignment for APAC Atlantic from Tally Construction. Tally Construction has some new owners. I don't know of any changes in how they operate, but they, in our contract with Tally, it says that we have to approve any assignment for that and this just approves that we're okay with that sale and I don't believe that there's gonna be any impact to service.
Can I ask Tommy? Tommy, I mean, is this gonna be a good thing for us, having more availability or is this...
I don't think we'll notice a difference.
Okay, thank you.
7C is a... We have Miller Martin, which represents us on a number of different things, smaller things, but then there's, because they are, they represent us, they have a conflict around the intersection at 25th Street and Peerless that they're doing some... One of their partners in their firm is doing some work in there and basically this conflict consent would waive that or just make us aware of that. John, do you have any concerns with this?
What are you talking about, Ace Hardware?
Yeah. They represent the owner of the property lives in Virginia or Washington D.C.
Moving on to item... I'm gonna skip item A and B for the moment, but C, D, E, and F are all the ones that we just went through the public hearings. Now, I'm gonna go back to item A and this, I'm going to let Robert kind of walk us through from the last meeting, the request was to bring back a recommendation. He brought back forward a recommendation and we can kind of walk through that to see where we're at and have a conversation on that and let the floor is all yours.
Thank you. Yeah, as you all may recall, the past few meetings, we've discussed lot sizes and how staff deals with applicants and trying to prepare developments before we get too far along the process. I try to be consistent with everybody, as you all know, and so, I listened to some of the comments and specifically for item A, this was just me putting what I heard here as well as some of my own verbiage down on paper and saying, moving forward, this is the general direction I feel like you guys are comfortable with. This is not a document or a process that supersedes planning commission or anything else. Anybody can apply.
Why is that, Robert? Why didn't this go to the planning commission?
Well, I came to this body, the legislative, you know, for a long time and we talked about it, the 46-foot wide lots. That came from the council years ago. Yes, we're willing to come down to this point. As I get more and more applicants coming and talking about something that may be below that, what I didn't wanna do and what I explained to y'all originally is I don't wanna keep bringing things in here that you're just gonna say no to. That wastes money, time, and effort by everybody, so.
Let me add to that.
Yeah.
Just... This is just kind of a... When the development process happens, Robert has to give them some kind of, well, this is kinda, this is where our baseline is and that's all what the baseline is. And after he kind of, like the 46-foot, we would say 46-foot is what we require. If you wanna request something smaller, you can take whatever you want to the planning commission. So, we're not saying that they... We don't block any of that, but we do have a conversation with them.
But when we make a modification, how often would that just come directly to us? Like, the last time we made an exemption for 46 feet, did the modification go back to planning?
I'm not following the question.
The modification of the PUD.
So, and are you talking about the specific PUD that's item B?
10A.
Okay.
The mixed-use development.
Yeah, that is, that is a... Our previous policy was 46 and this is because of the last meeting, the council said, hey, bring us back something consistent with our comments. So, this is a new attempt and what we wanna convey is that this has nothing to do with the development process. This is just, gives some subtle direction from the council of Robert on where you want to start the conversation with the developer that's coming in.
Will this be a policy, Joe?
What?
Will it become policy?
Well, there's a difference...
I'm just confused.
There's a difference between an ordinance, which is black and white, that this is, you have to do this.
Right.
This is Robert's recommendation
Gotcha.
to the planning commission.
And to this body.
And to this body. So, to give you an example, so like on this particular example, there's 46 feet has been our policy that the council has said that that's what they would prefer to be the minimum. Robert starts the conversations and says, our minimum is 46. If they say that they want to do 42, we say, okay, well, we'll start the planning process and the planning commission can do whatever they want, but our recommendation, Robert's recommendation was, we're gonna stay with 46 because that's what the council set as the baseline.
Right.
And so, so then it goes through the, and the planning commission can go and say, hey, we want 42 and then the plan, then it comes back to the council and then you guys can look at all the facts and make any decision you want. So, this item A is only giving some level of direction to Robert on where to start the conversation because we wanna be fair to them, is what we don't wanna have happen is we just sit there and say nothing and they start running 36-foot PUDs through and they get to council and you guys say, well, no, we don't wanna do that. It's better for the developer to know that, hey, you have a council that wants it to be 46 and that's really where it's gonna be, so you may wanna consider that before you go through the process. So, that's all, is just his point. It doesn't interfere at all with their rights or their ability to go through the process or to get anything. It just, basically, the council's saying, this is where we wanna start the conversation. The council can change the policy on any given vote. They can do anything they want. Have I addressed your question?
You have, yeah.
Okay.
It's the flexibility of it.
Yeah, and so, like then the next item B is the PUD. That's an actual ordinance and that's black and white and we all have to follow that.
Right, okay.
What we wanna do is preserve...
Correct, it's flexible for us, for them.
Yeah, what we don't wanna do is, we don't wanna have a black and white ordinance policy that ties your hands, that there are extenuating circumstances that can happen, is this just is trying to give as much fairness to the developer of, hey, we deal with this stuff because if they're an out-of-town developer, this is what we've seen and this is, you should know that. And it's fair that they know that upfront, but they have all the legal ability to put in front of the planning commission and the council anything that they want.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that hit it.
Robert, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
This mixed-use we're going through right now, I wasn't here last time, did we have a policy for mixed-use developments? Is this something we're creating or is this, do we have a policy on black and white right now?
No, I mean, we have a mixed-use zoning designation.
Do we have a mixed-use for PUDs?
No, no, it's been pretty wishy-washy.
So, is this supposed to be some clarity to that?
Yeah, well, it gives me clarity when I begin conversations with the developer. Like I said at the very beginning, money, time, effort, we're putting into this, they're putting into this.
How many mixed PUDs do you have come to? This is the first one that's came to us?
No, no, we have probably at least...
Is this the first one that's sitting out there?
No, I think we have three or four on Paul Huff that allow for mixed use, but there's no specification at all in those on how much of one versus the other.
For, Mayor, I'd like to speak on this a little bit before we go further.
Do you want Robert to actually go through it and kind of explain?
No, I just want some clarity. I mean, I'm not, I'm not for it. For a mixed-use development, for a PUD, we have the right to negotiate. We don't see many of these coming through except they're big developments. I don't wanna put anything in writing that we don't have a mixed-use development right now because that clarifies this 40 square, 40 feet frontage road. I'd rather have 46 and let them hash it out if it meets the requirements of the infrastructure, you know, going in and out, four lanes and stuff. I don't have a problem if you get it in someplace, you put it in writing, you won't have problems. We could be backed up in a Pandora box. Somebody's gonna say, well, this is what a mixed use is and I can do this because y'all approved it. I don't wanna, I'd rather for us to go through the process and keep it PUD, keep it just as general as possible and if it mixed as used makes sense, I have no problem going forward with it. I just wanna keep, I don't wanna put this boxes into a place to where later down the road, somebody brings something to us and we're like, wow, we don't really wanna do it and say, well, it's in black and white now. We can't do it. I'd rather do that on an individual basis than we do PUDs right now.
Well, and this, what we're talking about, and I hear what you're saying, I don't wanna be in a box either.
I don't.
But this doesn't put me in a box. This gives me parameters where I feel comfortable bringing people in front of you, knowing that I am doing, or my recommendation is...
I'm okay doing it if it's 46 feet, I'm not okay with 40 feet.
Yeah.
Okay? I won't support it because I'm not for, if it's one that fits the criteria and it's makes sense, I'm all for 42 or whatever we could do. I'm afraid of what Dan said is we'll get ourselves and people are coming back saying 38 and 36.
Well, I think the needle will continue to move.
I'd rather not do that.
Yeah.
Personally, I'd rather not do it. I won't support it.
Robert, can you walk through actually what the policy says?
Yeah, I can and it's, it talks about what kind of standards, if you're going, so when I talk to people in general, we're talking about a greenfield development that's just a neighborhood, then the number's gonna be 50 feet width, but you can do an average. So, if you need to adjust because of slope or whatever, you can get down to 46, but it's gonna be an average of 50. So, when they come in under certain parameters, which is what we're looking at here and where they've got a little bit smaller of a neighborhood, but it has mixed-use components, it's going to say, okay, you wanna do that, you wanna minimize that 46 and get below it, well, then you're gonna do A, B, and C. It's the rear-loaded parking with having enough spaces off-street so that we're not, you know, causing congestion on our streets of all, it's not a parking lot.
Is this new development we got rear-loaded parking in it?
This one is not, no, but again, they came in, submitted a site plan through the process and this did not, we had not talked about all these things. The other components or the open space has to be usable. If we're gonna minimize our lot sizes and take away yards, then there's gotta be a usability of our open space within the development, so they're not just depending on getting their car and driving to a city park. They've got somewhere right there they can walk to on the pedestrian network that they can use. It's not stormwater, it's not slope, it's usable land and has amenities. The other components is the architectural enhancements. So, we're getting real tight, we do the rear-loaded, you've got your garages behind it, enhancing that architectural so that it preserves longer. Because one of the things I heard from you all was concerns on the durability long-term of some of this and how they hold up over time. So, higher architectural standards, higher design standards bring better development that will ideally last longer and be higher quality for a longer period of time. So, those are the...
And the parking?
The parking is required to have four off-street spots, plus you've gotta have these parking lot-type, you know, guest parking area is not necessarily just 90-degree turns in.
That's fine. Everything you listed on this thing when I got this email, I agree with all the points. That's fine. I don't agree with, these developments would have 125 units or less when you start talking about 40 square feet or something. That's the only one I got heartburn with.
Okay.
I really don't... Reason I've got heartburn since we're on it, and I appreciate you giving the notes, but I read through this and I got it tabbed in here, there was a long conversation. There was a long conversation with Planning Commission with parking up front.
Mm-hmm.
Rear parking.
Oh, yeah.
How parking on sidewalks, can you park on the street?
Right.
And with that, with public safety, I've got a real problem with people and, and public safety comes first for anything else. Parking on the streets, I know there's timeframes and stuff we're talking about, but is the excess for the fire department to get in with the ladder truck?
Yeah.
Is a circle turn big enough for the ladder truck? Lenox Hills, it's not. What's happened in the past, you can't get a school bus in Lenox Hills. Dr. Elliott, am I correct on that? You, you got a small school bus comes through there at six-thirty because the lights blinking and goes by my window. But you don't have enough access and the fire department doesn't have enough access in Lenox Hills either. I know it's thirty years ago. I want to make sure the radius, turns and everything else are appropriate to fit our fire department.
And they are, and, um, you know, we, we've talked to both the schools, uh, and, and the fire department reviews every subdivision. They're a part of that process. They look at those, uh, turning radiuses and, and things like that. I'm, I'm not sure.
If you're parking on the street, do you still have the same?
Well, and, right.
Do they know you're parking on the side of the street?
Yeah.
Parking lots.
Well, and then there's some places where you can do the, you know, like in neighborhoods, if everybody agrees, you do the no parking signs and you put them up, but no.
But people don't follow that.
No, well.
If you have an emergency and if they're trying to get in there, how are they going to get in there? Hit a fire, hit a, hit a.
I think they'll just knock them out of the way.
It happened in Lenox Hills, y'all actually, actually, the fire department actually hit a car in Lenox Hills trying to go up there because there's parking on the side of the street and we had all that snow and stuff trying to excess up there. So my question is, is it wide enough to be parking on both sides of the street for a fire truck to get in and go through the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, the, so our road widths are dictated by, uh, the size of our fire trucks and, and we can have continual conversations between their department, our department, Public Works and Transportation about.
And schools too.
Yeah, oh, and they're, you know, they're, they're always, and one of the things we've tried to do with the PUDs is, okay, the schools are having a harder time going in all these neighborhoods because there's, there, you know, we've added, so at the front, we're making these developers build these pavilions where they can have one specific place to pick up.
Right.
That helps, but, um, and, and, and I think that that's been a benefit to them. But, and, and, you know, the, the cul-de-sacs, the development side will push for a tighter, smaller, and then our ordinances are.
Tighter, smaller doesn't help us with public safety.
No, I know.
I want to make sure we have enough premises to, to get through with trucks being bigger and, and ladder trucks and things as we get larger, we're having larger vehicles. You know, back in thirty years ago, we didn't ever have a, a big ladder truck like we got now, I'm sure, don't we, Debbie? I mean, the, the length of it, I mean, what it is now, I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty good size.
Yeah, and, and, and the size of those radiuses and how you can turn around, that's all dictated in the subdivision regulations, the fire department.
That's one we'll get to too. If we, Jonathan, do we have our, our codes in our, for our subdivision stuff or R-one stuff? Or do they meet the requirements that they have right now currently or, or?
Oh, yeah.
Have we changed those? Because I know we're going back to changing something that's been twenty years ago and we're trying to update or something. So are those codes?
The fire department reviews and stamps off on every.
They, they have, yeah. They do, and, and they have comments for me, like, in the future, we need to address this or maybe look at that. We've made some adjustments as we've gone, we'll continue to do it.
We adjusted something to where if there's over so many houses, they have to have a second.
Second entrance, yeah.
So then you block the end, the fire department can get there from another.
Is that by number of homes or is that the number of people living in it?
Homes, number of.
Well, does this fit in that when you got a hundred twenty-five when consolidated in a whole small area? I mean, is, is that, does that fall under that consideration?
It does not, it, it would not fall under the threshold of the double entrance, but the one that is in front of you has item B.
It's only one entrance.
Has multiple entrances.
Okay.
But we, yeah, no, we, we worked together on every development, um, because, I mean, development regulations are, are here for a number of reasons, but public safety is paramount, number one.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
I, I, I want to, go ahead.
Chief, do you have any concerns with, um, neighborhoods with fire trucks?
Well, not what he's talking about in this particular one. I think our street width is around twenty feet and I think your subdivisions are twenty-two.
Right.
So we're, we're using the International Fire Code, which this council adopted.
Yeah.
That's our guidelines.
Okay.
And that's what we use.
This one actually is a little wider than what we would require.
Okay.
Uh, the cul-de-sac, uh, ninety-six feet is a, a turning radius that we need. I'm not sure what this one.
Okay, Robert, I apologize.
You, you don't have to apologize, those are good questions.
I want some clarity because of, I live in Lenox and we can't get school buses or fire trucks.
Right.
Like I'm saying.
We don't want that to be.
They're hitting cars parked on the side of the road sometimes.
I, I don't think that's a reason to apologize, I think those are good questions, um.
So I just want to make sure we're going forward, we're doing the things we need to in order to make sure.
Well, and thirty years ago, we didn't have half of the cooperation and I'm not saying people didn't cooperate, but we all look at these plaits and these developments, so. But the, the standards that I put on that document are not ordinance, they are not codified. This is to help me when I am dealing with developers who are about to spend A, B, and C to develop plans, I'd like to give them guidance.
They're called discussion topics.
They are, it's, it's, it's my.
I think Vice Mayor Webb had a question, Vice Mayor?
Robert, I'm curious about how you define twenty-five percent commercial component?
By acreage.
By acreage?
Yes.
The whole development including detention ponds?
The whole thing. I think that's my phone in the back.
Should that be?
To developer?
Probably.
Should that be split by?
Uh, you, we could specify it as acreage, yes. It should be.
To explain the equation?
It should be.
Agreed.
Make sure that clarification is done before we talk about it and vote on it at that time, if that possible?
Are you talking about just adding that, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make sure that these things are.
Yes.
Some more clarity to it.
Uh, you know, I'm happy to, to add or subtract from the document itself. I think the, the acreage point, you know, is something we can clarify today, I'd have to vote and move forward. But if there's other hiccups or questions, I'm happy to.
Councilman, uh, Goff had a question, Councilman Cassidy, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just want to make sure on percentages that make, if we don't get into a spot, you say forty-two or whatever it may be, and they say, okay, forty-two, and they have a two-hundred front entrance and they say, well, the average is?
No, no.
Forty-two, I, I want, I want to make sure that you only have some.
No, that's addressed in there. That, that you can, that gives parameters on how wide it can be versus how.
I don't make sure they can sway it one way or the other.
No, that's, that's.
We have an average of forty-six.
You can have one lot with a thousand feet, I get it, no, yeah.
I just plain double that.
Yeah.
Councilman Goff?
I thought of that one.
Hey, thanks for you and the staff working on this after the last meeting. I'm not as hung up on the, the lot widths as Councilman Cassidy is.
Right.
I think it is a good idea to have an average lot width, which I see in here is, is the fifty feet. I do have some concerns over a few other items.
Sure.
It looks as though a lot of these things really kind of mimic what, uh, Mr. Issa's property is. And I know we have this twenty-five percent commercial component in here, but in my opinion, even Mr. Issa's development really, in my opinion, isn't really a mixed use, it's really just residential on a road behind commercial.
Right.
So making a PUD designed around having to have a twenty-five percent commercial is a concern, I guess one concern that I have.
Well, and that would be to get to that level of density, yeah. I, I understand it, it, um, to me, it's, uh, when you look at a piece of property like that and what kind of development is going to go in there? You know, uh, we start asking ourselves, well, we've got, could it be all-town homes, could it be apartments, et cetera, et cetera? Um, it could be any of those and, and so, um, and, and defining mixed use, I mean, there's, it, 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 that's, that's an interesting question, I'll put it that way.
Subjective, yeah.
You know, they're accessed by the same roads and they come off the highway from the same way, it's in one ordinance altogether. To me, that lends itself to, you know, we've got other PUDs on Paul Huff that abstractly allow residential development, but they have no numbers, so it could be, it, it, there's no, uh, sense of how much of one versus the other. It's just whatever you want to do.
Sure. And it fits because it's being developed at the same time, but.
Right.
Had Mr. Issa develop the commercial on the front end, then by this document here, he would not be allowed to build the residential on the back because it wouldn't fit at that point.
Right.
So.
Well, it would fit, it'd just be different numbers, I think, is.
Oh, you'd still have twenty-five percent on the backside at that.
So, or, or, you know, in essence, um, if it was a regular PUD, he'd be coming in at forty-six that we've been consistent with and that would be it.
There's not.
It's not an ordinance, that's why there has to be some common sense built into that.
This is, I, this doesn't lock me in, it gives me guidance.
Sure.
Yeah.
I just, there's not a lot of developers that do residential and commercial. You know, it's more generally one or the other and then.
And they're going to be on the busier highways where the infrastructure's in place, which is where I think the higher density belongs.
And then I guess, you know, just moving to, and I don't have to, you know, I don't want to break the whole thing down necessarily, but four off-streets, parking spaces, not including a garage, I'm all for, I was the one that had the problem with the parking spaces last time, but at, at the same time, on the other end of the spectrum, I feel like it's a lot of parking spaces to require. That would, that, that could be five or six potential full spots if they have a single or double car garage.
Right.
Uh, and, you know, I, I don't know specifically on this type of development, but on a apartment complex that has open parking, I think the average ends up being like one point seven. So four and a half, or four plus five if you have a garage.
Depends on the bedroom count, but yeah. If they're one bedrooms and, then yeah, but then otherwise it'd go up to two.
I just don't want to take the, you know, it looks like we're saying, you know, mom, dad and two kids all have a parking space, but that's probably more on the higher end of the spectrum.
Well, and, and one thing we're seeing is more and more people living in a single house, um, than we've ever seen before because of the costs. And, and, um, we're talking on one side about fire trucks trying to get down the street. I've got to get them off the road.
Sure.
I have to, and.
Because Lenox, Lenox has the same thing, there's a couple neighbors up there, it's just parked, I mean, they got four.
And we don't want them in the yard. So what, what, where's the alternative? Because the yard, that brings a whole different problem.
And I know any guidelines, I totally get that, uh, but like pedestrian network, I'm all for that, except for if we do the rear loads, I mean, there's some good examples of neighborhoods in the surrounding community, uh, surrounding Cleveland that have sidewalks in the entire neighborhood, except for they don't have them on the, uh, the rear load.
Mm-hmm.
Drive.
When you come out your front door, there's a sidewalk, but not.
Right, so you know, we're here, we're saying you have to have it, but really, you may not. So I, I don't know, I, I guess my question is, it, there's not really a rush, I don't think, to complete this document and, and maybe we should. We've got some, some smart people in the Planning Commission as well. I mean, do you have any issue maybe taking the document back and having their input as well?
Really, this was just, I mean, and, and I, um, I know where, where they are, um, pretty well. And they're rec, when it comes to zoning, they're recommending body. My objective with this exercise was, um, because, you know, they don't always go with my recommendation, I, it's, you know, that's fine. I'm trying to prepare people for when, in zoning wise, they're getting to the point where their project is going to be voted on and it's either not or yes or no. Because at that point, you get the no, you're not reapplying for something like that for twelve months minimum. And, and it's got a lot higher stakes. So that's, I came to this body because it's the legislative action. I have no problem asking the Planning Commission for input, I, I'm pretty sure I know what it is. But, um, and it would probably differ from mine. This is from a staff perspective is where this came from.
From, from that aspect of it, uh, rear parking, Cambridge Park has rear parking.
Yes.
And, and that's what I'm looking at is, if you look at any of the perimeters that they have because of Cambridge Park and that. Uh, because, you know, this is not going to be the last time this council, if I'm wrong or not, is going to address this issue because
No.
a Hardwick Farm is coming up and I got a feeling that there's some rumors about having Cambridge Park there with residential.
Cambridge Square, Tom?
Yeah.
Cambridge Square?
Cambridge Square, yeah. Cambridge Square, New Wall, yeah.
Yeah, and I envision.
Parking, it's got sidewalks and, and that, I mean, it's a good base to try to learn.
I was just clarifying.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Cambridge, Cambridge, Cambridge Square. And I was just clarifying because we will see more projects like this with, with, on busier roads.
Yes.
And other access and other properties, restaurants and everything that's going with it. So, uh, I just want to make sure we don't put ourselves in a position where.
You know, it's funny, I, 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 I really did this exercise for my own benefit. This was about me giving people good advice.
Yeah. Maybe look at Cambridge Square.
Well, and, and, uh, you know.
Hold the air space.
I didn't really, uh, intend on it getting derailed to, we're not putting ourselves in a box.
Yeah, none of this is.
We're not setting policy.
None of this is tech anything you've done at all.
I don't think it is, I, and I don't, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just coming at it from a perspective of, uh, trying to get my guidance. Because what I do a lot is guide people through the development process and, um.
You got it in here, it says minimum forty feet per lot width.
Right.
That, that's where I got heartburn.
I know you, yeah, I know.
I just want to be able to have the option to look at each.
Absolutely.
Presentation individually and I feel like, I feel like we're taking something that's supposed to be give and take from the city and the developer and we're making.
There's a lot of give there, I think, and, and we are boxing it in and, um.
So I'm, personally, I would rather be much less restrictive and let them come to us and be turned down and given guidance to how we can, how we can, I don't, I don't want people coming to you and having a guidance where then they say, well, can't develop in Cleveland because these three things aren't, aren't going to work for us. I'd rather it be them coming and saying, hey, this is what we want, and then we say, well, we like what you're doing, but, but these items have to change, kind of like we did with, you know, Mr. Issa two weeks ago and, uh, they're, they're changing them and have made some great adjustments that seemingly work now. So I know that doesn't help you because.
And that's okay, that's okay, but the, the exercise started with me just saying, this is where we're at, is this where we want to stay?
Again, Robert, if, if, if it makes sense, I'm for it, okay? If, if, if the perimeters meet all the things we need, forty-two, but I don't want to put it on paper at forty-two, I want to keep it forty-six. That's my personal opinion. All other stuff you got in there is, is great.
Yeah.
But, but I just, you know, I'd rather them come to us. We've made some adjustments too on clusters, you know, I'm saying, going down to forty feet or less because they're corn lots and, you know, we've done those things. So we're, we're willing to work with the developer.
Oh, absolutely.
We're not going to say no to them unless it makes sense, but you can't put the same plot on somewhere else, it probably wouldn't work with a two-lane road, you know what I'm saying?
No.
It just, it, 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 it's just got too many variables.
There's variables to each development, they're all independent.
And that's something we just have to address as a body.
And, and I think that, that continues to be so, um, it's more just about, uh, people who are coming in and, and looking at large-scale development and thinking about spending millions and millions of dollars. I want to make sure my guidance is appropriate for them as they prepare. Because I don't want to waste three months getting somebody in front of council and then we're bouncing around, um.
So tell us about the, what the changes in the PUD are, the actual ordinance that.
So.
That they'll have to.
Item B.
Yes or no.
Yeah, the, the one that's in front of you now, um, they, they changed their parking, uh, there is an updated site plan in the packet.
Page thirty, thirty-three.
Yeah. And, um, they changed how the parking works, they added some amenities. They're going to continue to add a few more small components, but it's, um, uh, they've, they've spaced or, or adjusted their spacing between their units, um, to add a little bit more open space and things like that.
Just put six, we were talking about.
That's, uh, yes, it is, I think so. And, and, and so.
This could be built without.
Really, they addressed, the one thing they did not get was the rear loading aspect. They had designed it, came in here, um, and, and that part was not included. That's really the only item I saw out of what we talked about.
But the parking went from on-street parking to parking lots.
Yeah.
And, and the PUD says that at night through certain times that they can't have, they can't park on the street overnight.
Right, which, which, uh, you know.
But the parking lot is where they get, they're at, correct?
Not, one of them.
One of them, yeah.
One of them's by a dog park.
Access.
And then there's another little side one.
Yeah.
Um, and, and.
How many does it have on the side? How many does it have on the side?
Uh, there's about twelve over there, and then there's one at the back with Dog Park that I think has about fifteen or sixteen. It's, there, there's almost thirty off-street parking places that are not on a lot included. It's a, it's a considerable amount compared to what we've seen, and it gets it off the street, which is good, because then there's no question of who's responsible for it.
And it's approved by the, the planning commission?
The planning commission recommended approval from the original.
Seven to two.
Seven to two.
And two were absent, correct?
No, two were opposed.
Two were opposed, one abstained.
Okay, can I ask why the ones who were opposed, what their questions?
The lot size.
Okay.
That they, because the vote at the planning commission was with the forty-two, staff was at forty-six.
Robert, of the recent residential PUDs, how many have requested the forty-six versus the fifty? Got any idea?
Almost all. We, I have one that I think is actually gonna, they, they have the forty-six allowance, but they're not gonna do anything less than fifty. We had one that they requested originally, and, and I recommended based on their lot count, they think again because I felt like they could have a better product at a little bit bigger lot, they agreed. Most go to that forty-six as a bottom, as a, as the very ti, you know.
How about the one on Tasso Road up at the top of the hill?
Yes.
That was a forty-six, wasn't it?
Yes, it is.
They asked to go down.
They asked to go to forty.
And, and if they go forty-six, my understanding from the notes, it, it eliminates four homes.
On, on this particular development, yes.
Yeah, that's what the notes.
That's what they're, that's what they have stated, I've not done the engineering.
Four homes.
Yes.
You go, eliminated all of them.
Well, it eliminates them, but they become probably townhomes instead because you've got twenty and twenty.
They say single dwelling homes for them, in, in the notes, in the planning commission, which is what we talked about.
But mo, but to your question, almost all of them.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm, I'm done with answering questions.
Anything further?